Welcome to call the Bellefond Borough Council Work Session to Order at 6:30 PM. Council Chambers is open to the public with normal standard occupancy levels. Face mask coverings are optional. Masks are available at the sign in desk. You can view the feed, the recording of work sessions and the Borough Council meetings. Council Work Sessions and business meetings can be viewed live on YouTube. And also recordings can be viewed at CNET Comcast Government Education Channel 7. And you're also welcome to attend virtually by contacting the Borough by 4:00 PM on the Monday, the same day of the meeting, and they can get the link to you. Called to order, welcome in comments, welcome everybody to the Bellefond Borough Council's Work Session. No action is to be taken during the Work Session to make any motions or approvals. These are all taken during the main meeting if it's on the agenda. Next then, we'll move into the trivia question by Mr. Bernier.
Hey, who can tell me how many historical buildings there are in Bellefond Borough? How many historical buildings roughly?
How do you define that? Do you define them as decimated, or do you...
No, Joanne, you're killing me. Geez, it's supposed to be fun now. Come on, how many roughly? How many roughly?
Ninety-eight.
Fifteen. All right. Randy, what's your guess? Come on, let's have some fun.
I said ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. Anybody else? Cleaver?
Does that include homes? Or just buildings?
That's a good question. That's a good question. The district contains three hundred and thirty-eight principal buildings. Of that three hundred and thirty-eight, how many are historical? Your guesses aren't even close. Three hundred and thirty-eight.
It depends. Three hundred and thirty-eight.
Hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and thirty-eight.
Two, two, two hundred and twenty-four.
And I would disagree because based on what Gronbang told us.
Hey, Joanne, I knew you would, but we're still having a good time.
Because Gronbang said everything within the historic district is historic, no matter what the age.
Two hundred and twenty-four. Seventy-four percent possess historical character in Bellefond, according to the internet. All right, get on with business. That was fun.
If this was the price was right, I would have won.
That's right. That's right. Good job, you guys.
All right, here we go.
All right.
We're gonna move into the special presentation. This will be fifty-five minutes of the meeting. And what we're gonna be doing this evening is another overview of the new budgeting process format. And we have Ralph and Julie here to go over this information once again. And then I guess at some point, you're gonna be sending these forms out, correct?
Right.
Whoever wants to start.
Let's just go down through the list. Start, and then we'll pitch in or chime in as we go through.
Okay. I had given you all some guidelines on this, so we're gonna go through the spreadsheets a little bit.
They were sent out with a packet, but we're gonna bring them up on the screen here in a second.
Probably, and I don't have a copy of those.
Yeah, I could give you my copy if you'd like.
I can make a copy too if you want me to.
This has most everything right there. Of course, we just have the one copy. We can make copies. Does anybody else want a paper copy? Please, by all means, stop us as we go through. We're just gonna give an overview. And it's meant to be questions and answers, and we'll try to give you kind of where the information's coming from and how you're gonna work with it as you go through the process.
Okay. So each of the parts of the general fund that we go through, sections like Streets Department, will have a folder set up. So basically, you've been viewing these as line items on the budget. You don't have a lot of detail on them. So we're gonna take these items, kind of, we'll use those line items, and they'll be distributed into these, a different way of looking at them, and it gives us more detail and the ability to rank them for the priority budgeting. So we're, the guidelines that I gave you were kind of scoring guidelines for you. Your guidelines for council are geared towards the strategic management plan, and so you have a bigger picture on those rankings than the staff and managers. So the first, this first spreadsheet is what the staffs, the staff will complete before you get a chance to look at the strategic management plan, that kind of rating. So this first sheet, like I said, for Streets. So we'll have our programmer service listed, and then we'll go to what service level is required. Now, all of these rankings are a zero through four ranking. The highest rankings would be the programs that are most valuable to, or, you know, most valuable to us, the Borough, to residents. For this, we have what level of service is required. And then we have, is the program or service mandatory? Is the program or service a priority for the community? Does the Borough have to be a direct provider? Go on over a little further. Can the program include user fees if it's not self-supporting? Should the program or service be delivered by another organization? Or, and do opportunities exist for sharing the services with other organizations using volunteers?
And these numbers that you have up there right now are just stuck in, or is that something...
No, those are actually rankings for these right now. This is, this one's in progress. So these are rankings that Matt's looked at and given rankings for these programs. Now, as you're looking at them, the ones in red are ones that, just for us to look at, that are mandatory. So these ones, when you're looking at areas that you might want to change how the service is provided, or look at for any type of, kind of a lower budgetary ranking, these mandatory ones would not be anything that you need to rank.
Let me just say a couple of things. You know, within our general fund budget, which is what we're gonna focus on, we have about three point five million dollars going in and going out. Of course, we break it into departments like Streets. This is really kind of what we're focused on tonight as an example, but you have policing, Streets, general government. This process, instead of seeing just a line item, and that might say personnel and some bigger items under Streets in a typical standard budget, this breaks out what is actually being done for the resources going through the budget. So we're identifying what happens during the year, and then we're prioritizing them, and you're gonna turn around and do the same thing after listening to the data and listening to the supervisors. And at the end of the day, you're gonna try to squeeze in the higher priority tasks, services, components within the resources coming in. So in a nutshell, that's what we're trying to do. It's supposed to help you take the resources coming in and prioritize what's the highest value services being provided for the resources, and then rank them. Traditionally, the old style budget is everything stays the same, everything's in year after year, and all we do is add some percent increase, and there's not much questions asked. That has, you know, that's really what many, probably ninety-nine percent of the local governments do year in, year out. This is a fairly new program that switches the thinking and says, where's the money going? What does a service cost to provide, both direct and indirect costs? And then rank them, what's high priority for our community? And then, you know, at the end of the day, we try to squeeze in everything as much as we can, or reallocate, that's another key thing. It's not simply about cutting. It might be saying, we're gonna take a low item and reallocate those resources to a high priority item, and, you know, make our dollars and cents go to where it's high priority areas. But, you know, come November, December, it should be easier to fit in the high priority items, and the lower priority items, you know, that might be where you wanna cut or drop them off the list for funding if you wanna stay within the resources we have. So we'll go on, what pitch, sure.
So if I'm looking down this list and we see special events.
Yes.
These are expenses. If we were to, and we've talked about this before, is having special events being paid for by the nonprofits? How would that fit into showing this here?
Actually, question, this will force us to ask questions. Can, you know, is there a fee, or can fees be generated, or other resources be generated to cover that expense? Some are gonna say yes, some are gonna say no. Special events is one that would say, yes, we could add an application fee. And then, you know, look at that as we go through the process. It could be, that's a very good example. It's like low-hanging fruit, you know? Could we adjust the application fee to cover more of the expenses that we're, in court we're basically dealing with, that the general fund is dealing with? So that's a good example. We'll go through, and that series of questions will drive us to, can we add application fees? Can other entity do anything that might, maybe a shared entity or a shared provision for the service? There's just a lot of good questions we'll ask as we go through.
So these have, there's another form that I included, if you had looked over it a little bit, and it was a detail form. So each of these have attached to them a detail. So in the detail form, it gives us all of the costs associated in there. So as I said, we're, it's work in progress here, so we're working on that. And then it asks us very same questions that were in the spreadsheet. So this is the form that you can look at. It's much easier to look at, gives you more information. We go down here, and it gives us a description of the service. If there is another provider, we might put that in this description of the service to give options for that. If there are different, other, if it's a mandatory service, we can put that in there as well, or a mandatory service that maybe can be still provided by another provider other than the Borough. So.
To give you a couple of examples, or maybe explain the process, you know, we're all trying, we're all trying to grasp how this is gonna work, but, you know, there's probably for the last ten years, there's been a lot of local governments trying this out. So they're either, you know, ten years ahead, or they're just getting into it like we are. But my point is, you know, once the forms are established, we try to break down things as supervisors, try to break down the services that are within each department. Or service, component, you know, whatever term we wanna use, like traffic paint, traffic painting, I guess it is, street painting, you know, that's a component. It has materials, it has labor, has some equipment associated with it. So we had identified that. And the supervisor's gonna rank things with the same system. And, you know, they can add those comments on the detail sheet, more like paragraph or the backstory, as we say, as to what's, why we're doing it, whatever input they want to provide. Then we see, the way this typically works is it flows to the council members and the mayor, and we have a work session. We'd have the supervisors here. We'd walk down through the comments, the, you know, category, let's say, street sweeping. And we look at how the supervisors ranked it, maybe get some verbal comment on how things are ranked, and do that, you know, hopefully efficiently, but go down through the list of services that are in that department. And you're, then you get to rank things as well. You get to hear verbally from the supervisors. You get to look at how they rank things, and then you get to rank things. And as we go through, you know, towards the end again, we're gonna revisit everything and see how things shake out. I know, just talking with Randy when we're doing the agenda planning, there might be a service that we talked about previous, in previous budget years, that we wanna see if they can be done on an intergovernmental, regional agreement basis, or who knows? But as we go through, we're gonna trigger ideas. Hey, you know, if this can be done by another entity, or we don't have to do it, we're not mandated to do it, is there any other way it can be done? You know, less, maybe we don't pay the total cost through our taxes collections, maybe we share it, do it some other way. That, so there, it's reallocation, it might be somebody else providing the service as we go through and learn, you know, the strengths of this system. There might be some things that we could do to change our numbers, or provide the same service at a different cost.
So just looking at this one?
Yeah.
You've got eighteen points total?
Yes.
I only count sixteen in those things. Where, how did, and does this total points roll over into the other? How does that all work?
There's the, okay. So this, this is directly from the spreadsheet. So basically, they went through and ranked, and this just gives you kind of the words, how they, how they rank them, what exactly it is. Like a two is demand for services slightly increased.
So it's a number of employees added to the points to make the eighteen? Is that...
No, there's a two, four, 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 four.
Four A's.
You just look from what numbers required on that, from the...
Okay.
Yeah, so for street sweeping right here, actually, that's all these numbers across here that are added at the end there. And then, so there's a column there at the end where it totals. And then there's also a column that is linked to the council sheet that will total and average all of your scores. So all of your scores would be individually totaled, and then an average for each of those.
Now, one of the sheets that Julie sent out, you know, walks down step by step. Let me just say, it's still, I know it's still confusing, and we're not near done yet, but we're gonna go with this in a couple of work sessions, 'cause repetition's how we learn. But also, as you're going through it, we'll offer a one-on-one, you know, process if you want to. When it's all said and done, we're happy to walk through with everybody as needed, you know, to make it work for you.
So this, these are the sheets that the staff will complete, and then, if you see this tab at the bottom, this is for you. So it looks pretty similar. You've got, everyone has a section with their name, we'll go across, that you can do scoring for each of these items. So you'd really be concerned with the items that were not in red for your scoring, you know, because the mandatory items would not really be anything that we could do adjustments to.
So the columns that are moving over with everybody's last name on them, obviously, I mean, I know it's obvious, we're just trying to explain, it says like strategic management plan goals. Now, those goals, there was four or five roughly out of our strategic plan that we finished in 2021. And, you know, there was like a major goal, and then there's like sub, mini-sub goals underneath. So what you're seeing there is the main giant goal, you know, and then, you know, we have verbiage, we could send that out to you, the mini-goals that went under them, like, when it says increased revenue, what do they mean? You know, so we can break it down, because the strategic plan gave like four or five mini-recommendations.
So is that what's found in the details on this one?
Well, we can provide, and I know I, just putting things together, like I did this, I can send this out. This is basically cut and, cut and, cutting, cut it and pasted from our strategic plan. This is goal number one. You know, we're, the main goal's here, and then the mini-goals are underneath of it. We can send this out to everybody. Just helps you have, again, the back information, that those two words or one word, there's a lot of information, like long-term planning. What do you mean by long-term planning? You know, this, this would give you a little bit of background, but we really only, I mean, the goals are only a year old, and I know not everybody was here when that was being worked on. We could do it in a future round, some municipalities, you know, do a newer, newer round and go through the whole process of just goal setting with community involvement. Because we just did these in 2021, we're using those. But just for, you know, background, other, other cities would do the same thing. They'd plug in their goals that they came up with and do the same scale system, rating system.
And so we're ranking it's in red, we will be ranking at all?
You would not need to rank. I think that would, that would probably make the system, or make it easier.
Yes. Yeah, what we're saying is that's something we have to do.
Yes, mandatory.
So you don't have to rank those.
This, so, and you click on these details, and it takes you to those forms, just, so you don't have to go back and forth between the other, this gives you all the information that was on that other sheet.
So this rolls over from the staff side?
Yes, it's exactly the same. So you have all of this, the rankings in that the staff has gone through and ranked. You'll have all of the costs and everything in there. And then you'll have the description, whatever the description is.
I have a question. You know, we don't need to look at what's in red. There still could be, you know, what people are putting in, you know, when you look across the board, everything was a four. So I think that we, at some point, we could look at that.
You certainly can, yes. You have access to that.
If you wanted to bring it up.
Correct, yes.
Like, I would say, Randy, that like, when we have the supervisors come in, if you have an idea, maybe how something could be done differently, or provided by a different entity that we didn't think about, or whatever, that'd be a good time to discuss it, yeah.
It's the first time for everybody, and it makes sense that the more you're talking about it, maybe the more different ideas come out.
Yes, yeah, we're okay with that.
Certainly. So...
And then all the numbers we're using are whole. Zero, one, two, three, or four. And that's it. Four and a half, four, three quarters.
No. Okay, so we'll move over here to our beginning. So when you're ready to come in and do your rankings, you would just look at this. The sheet that I gave you actually does describe the rankings. So the, the way that the staff will rank is kind of a straight ranking system, zero through four. Yours is also zero through four, but it will have, the zero through four will be exactly the same for each thing. You will just go and look at that particular thing, like increases in revenue, and it will have points under it that you'll consider to give it that ranking. Like increases in revenue. It develops or attracts new business, residents, or revenue opportunities for the Borough. So you'd wanna give that the highest score if it did a good job there. Improves infrastructure that attracts business. Maintains infrastructure that attracts business. Seeks opportunities for alternative funding or revenue for services. Creates partnerships. All of those are things that are part of the strategic management plan goals. So if it checks all of those boxes, then you would wanna give it a four. If there's, something's missing there, you know, if you, you know, you're kind of on the fence about a few of those items, then you could give it a lower ranking. But that way, you'll just be looking at those points each time. So for a long-term, the next one, long-term planning, that, the points under that are develops capital improvement plan for the Borough, develops program and service priorities. These are, does this program help to develop these items? Does the program further develop replacement plan for equipment and personnel? Or are these items all completed for the service or program? Planned opportunities for staff training, membership, and adds opportunities for long-term funding. And if it checks all those boxes, or it misses a few, then you'll adjust your ranking accordingly.
And if you can't see any of that in there...
Then you can also ask some more questions. You can also look to your detail form to see, like for the tree and brush cleanup. You might say, well, I'm not, I'm not sure. If you look through the detail form and you're still not very sure, this would be something that you'd wanna ask when you have supervisor present to ask them some more questions.
If after all of that, you still don't think it means anything, can you put down a zero?
You could put a zero. There's a zero. So yes, if you think it contributes nothing to the strategic management plan, then there's definitely a spot for that, too.
Okay.
So, so the optimizes internal operation. We had, so a service or program that has automated, that the billing is automated. There's resident contact services on the website, and equipment is optimized, and, you know, seeks opportunities for operational... And you know, seeks opportunities for operational efficiencies, creates partnerships, all from our strategic management plan. And then the last category is environmental sustainable, environmentally sustainable. So in that one, develops opportunities for sustainability in programs. Improves infrastructure or property with sustainable materials. Involves borough residents in sustainable projects or practices. Seeks opportunities for alternative funding or revenue for services that are sustainable, that include sustainable services. Uh, creates partnerships that develop sustainable projects. So if it checks all of those boxes or only a few, then you can adjust your zero through four ranking accordingly. And then, as I said, you only need to be concerned, like I said, you can scroll along here. Only need to be concerned with your section and put, you can rank each of those. Those total points will go there and then they'll be transferred over to the other sheet for the complete total. There, total points for ranking. So you can go back to that one if you'd like to see that total. But aside from that, really, you can stick on this this particular tab here in the sheets. And you can open any of these details, just as Randy said, any of the details. If you're curious about one of the mandatory programs, those will all be filled out as well. You can look over those.
So we're able to add to the detail? If if it's a question, like or you, I guess in my mind, what I'm thinking is because this is new, would it be possible to kind of make like a a worksheet to to give us so that we can work with this and do the worksheet before the next meeting? And then take those tallies and you can review that and then come back and then we could talk about what we did as far as the point system part of it.
Yes, well, you could also print the detail forms and for some notes as well. Or um, we could just give you some of those or a different kind of worksheet if you'd like a different one.
And what I'm hearing Randy say, and I think might be helpful, because looking at this list of the uh, goals and what you showed under the details, I don't see anything in what the managers have said, anything for like, how does this fit into long-term planning? How does this do sustainability? If that information was in the details, it would make it much easier for us to say, oh, now I understand what this particular issue is for increasing revenue. How do they think it might or that kind of stuff? They don't have to go into great detail, but if there's a little bit there, because right now it's like apples and oranges and I I can't see how it's gonna fit together.
Yeah, we we can look at that.
But then it may be wrong if something that we could go and still kind of look at, do our part of her of our column and send it in. Once it's done.
Okay.
Are the, these are you're like universal sheets who have to, is that right?
Yes, yep.
You could see other people's, is that okay? Your comments or I just sort of like the agenda, shared agenda?
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah, so you can you can just put your individual ones and then you could discuss them at some point or you can. So you think those kind of details in this detail form, like maybe?
It would be helpful, so like if Randy has a question, and like here it says clearing the snow and ice. How does that, maybe is that, are you might, we could say maybe have a section, additional section that says questions from council? And then we could put those in there and then that could go back to the manager and he could try to answer those questions so that we, when we, actually, all of us get to do it, it would make it much easier for all of us, both them and for us.
Yeah, and I know, you know, I think last, last year, the first snow we got, we were snowed in and and residents and businesses were not happy. And in some ways, these descriptions also need to manage expectations and what the borough staff are able to do in a sensible way to get that done.
Well, just using it, you know, looking at the example of snow removal, you know, the public works supervisors, you gotta list the other people involved, the costs, the equipment. And we may say it's, you know, it's under you, it's not serving as well as it could be, for example. You know, maybe that's an item we, an item we need to add to or somewhere along the lines. But you you have that advantage too, to reallocate or add to a service, that's a higher priority.
Definitely, so if you see that the snow removal is a higher priority, there could be another program that's yeah, lower and we could either staff or maybe overtime or something to that effect over there.
I I'm wondering if like a list serve might be better. Just you could see everybody's question and answers in one area, like, you know, like a list serve. I don't, I don't know, but it's just an idea. We'll have to figure out what makes the most sense.
I'm wondering if that becomes so many different pieces of paper that it becomes overwhelming.
I'm trying to figure out how not to do that.
If it's sent out on a computer, we don't, we don't need a newspaper, we're just putting it on the computer.
Yeah.
We're not printing anything out.
My service is a separate thing that you have to go to and it's.
It'd be nice if it was all included in here too. Could be another, we can add another area maybe for that, for comments or for questions that you wanna ask. That that is a good idea then, um, ahead of talking to the managers, they could even review them.
Yeah, chime in, yeah.
Yeah.
I have more of a technical question about this. Do you have or have plans to have sections of that protected so that people can't accidentally change something?
Yes, 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 we will. But also, don't panic and use your back button, that's always okay. But yes, I will protect something.
Yeah, I do a lot of this type of stuff for my work and I know people can accidentally get in there and yes.
Definitely happens.
Input in the wrong area or something and then you lose what you had, so.
So did you wanna go through scoring one?
Why don't we try, we thought about giving you an example, piece of data or service, just to give you a run-through of how this might work. I think you, did you try trees planting?
Yeah, we can try the tree planting. So we have the ranking here. Now, we don't have all of our revenue information yet, so.
And then, because are you ranking it from your perspective or or?
From council perspective, so I guess with your council goals, um. So looking at increased, increases in revenue, um, does that service tree planting develop or attract new business, residents? Um, does it improve infrastructure that attracts the businesses or residents? Uh, maintain, does it maintain infrastructure that attracts new residents or revenue? Or, um, and also does it seek opportunities for alternative funding? Do we have opportunities for alternative funding? Which actually, that one, I've highlighted it yellow, it is uh, something that we could look at for alternative funding. You can see.
And what does creates partnerships and we allocate revenue or resources to other areas?
So kind of a similar thing, uh, maybe if we don't have alternative funding for it, we may have a partnership that we could reallocate this the service to. So like volunteers.
Like we did with the uh, Bright Cities Plan where we partnered with State College.
Yes, exactly, or some other nonprofit that plants trees.
So as you can see, this has already been ranked right there, a two. Yes, the service could be provided by another public agency or nonprofit. The service could be funded through grants or other funding sources. Um, then here we talked about the service does recover fifty to seventy percent of costs, which is is not bad, but we could also shift that, what we are using there, to another area. So is the program a community priority? It's not serving, I guess technically the trees would be served, you could argue would serve. Just it would be small portion wherever you're planting them at the time. So the service isn't mandatory and, but the service is still in demand. So that could be one that we look at differently. So we'll go back to the ranking. And increases in revenue. So would you consider that service a four or how would you rank that?
I'd go the one.
Can I go to a four?
We'll plant trees every year.
Well, in this, and in this service, you know, in this particular thing, ranking it lower wouldn't necessarily mean it was eliminated or anything. It just might mean that we look at it and shift it to another form of revenue or another provider. So I guess since we're on Randy, Randy, how would you rank it? Oops, I'm not sure if it'll let me type in here. We'll see. Oh, maybe not. Oh, wait, I got ones.
A hundred and eleven.
I'm just delayed. I know. It's got a strange delay on there.
It's working.
Okay, uh, the long-term planning, same kind of thing. We look at that for the tree planting. Does the tree planting develop capital, you know, does it develop parts of our capital improvement plan? For boroughs, not really capital improvement plan kind of project. Does it develop um, program and service priorities and budgets? Still not exactly, some of these items won't exactly be that type of program. Uh, does it develop replacement plan for equipment and personnel? Planned opportunities for training, adds opportunities for long-term funding. So it doesn't meet really any of that for long-term planning.
Zero, zero, zero.
See how many zeros is left? No, that one's good. Next one, um, optimizes internal operations. So it's not a program that really does any of those type of things. So I guess when, as you're looking at these, you know, you have these strategic plan objectives. So as you're seeing a program that is ranking a little lower, it's still a program that's in demand by residents. So that is definitely an indicator you might wanna shift, you know, revenue or something like that for that. But not necessarily saying that you wanna eliminate it. Because obviously on the environmental sustainability, it's not what's going to rank well, so.
I'd give that a two.
So for sustainability, does it develop opportunities for sustainability in programs and services? Does it improve infrastructure or property with sustainable materials? Does it involve the borough residents in sustainable projects or practices? Uh, does it seek opportunities for alternative funding? Are we able to seek opportunities? So those, the one thing with this, you might wanna consider ranking a little higher is it does completely have that capability for seeking other opportunities and, you know, that can give it a slightly higher rank if you've got that. So still thinking that? Creates partnerships.
That one, yeah, that one could be, I think, a two, um, for creating partnerships. Seeks opportunity, what? These are my numbers. Because we don't do this every year. I I think the first one develops opportunities uh, for sustainability, a three. Improves infrastructure property. You could, that could be argued in both ways if you're talking to the resident who don't, doesn't want to contribute further than you are. You could go a three there. Uh, involves borough residents, I'd give that a four, if they wanna be involved. Uh, seeks opportunities for alternative funding. I don't see that in there. I'm not quite sure where that where that would come from, so I I'll go a one with that. And I'll stick with my two on the, or three with partnerships.
Okay, for that seeks opportunities for alternative funding, that might be something that you look in that detail sheet and you find that there's, uh, that the demand is still constant, but we have, we do have alternative, could be funded alternatively. So you could use that to help with that also. So. So three, two.
Three.
Three.
I'm getting bastard.
Okay, so I don't know, do you have any other questions? So like, as I said, you'd see, we'll go over, we can go down here to the end. And um, oops, that's a little far. And you have that average score. Which is zero because it's only one. Yeah, we're not averaging yet because we don't have, um, haven't gotten anybody else and that would not average too well. But that would be transferred over to the other.
Yeah, but it will be easier when you can go in and look at details and what's what's driving it right now.
So yeah, I noticed down here you've got streets, crew member, personnel. How are we gonna be ranking those? Because you, that doesn't, that's not red.
Well, we're trying to figure out how to give you the data without too much, you know, minutia, I guess. So we're still, I think there's just thoughts on the paper right now.
Yeah, we have those because if you needed to add additional personnel, it might be a a way for you to look at that and consider. So then we would have the job descriptions in there. And then, um, say, like, but like you said, for snow removal, we think maybe we might need another staff member. So you can then look at the costs that that would be, total cost for the staff member to add.
They fall under all the categories above.
Yes, so those, actually, the personnel, maybe we would have those red, something you don't need to really rank this way.
Maybe for like direct and indirect costs, but then like tree planting, we're gonna say there's five percent of labor or something associated with that, so, you know, we could, you could go down and do the math and figure out what five percent is. It's just, we're trying to gi- give you enough and not too much.
Okay, so yeah, rather than a line item to look at, then you have this extra information. So you can consider all of that whenever you're. Okay. Um, now, do we have anything?
So let me ask you something. You gonna have a, are you gonna have an administrative section? So like we've, where we've got the council costs and your cost and the office cost?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Right now, and and you, I would just say, a good homework project would be to review the existing twenty twenty-two budget. Because Lori, Lori's done a very good job of breaking everything out down. It's a, the old standard of line item by line item. Uh, I I just use uh, streets as an example. It's just gonna have a personnel cost, there's nothing broken down. Doesn't tell you how many people, doesn't tell you what streets do, does, you know? But uh, other than like, maybe might say like buying uh, street paint or something like that will have a number. Might be materials, it'd be a lot, more vague than, you know, but that's the standard budget. So we're gonna take the information, whether it's, you know, planning, zoning, our general council, our council, general government, mayor has a category, though Lori already has that broken down. So we might just go through the motions and try the the format with those categories. And try to add, like, uh, where we can, you know, what are some of the the services or duties or job description information that goes with that? You know, we'd throw that in there so you have that too.
So we'll just be taking those line items, like I said, and putting them back into into these types of categories. We can also list in the details, um, the line items as they were in the previous budget so that you can kind of see that all of those things have transferred in. I think that would be helpful to be able to look at one compared to the other.
And how about, I know that we've got uh, some line items that are, uh, like we we pay EMS. We've got a whole budget for that. We've got other ones where we, uh.
Good question.
Where that we, so like the, the library, the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, all of those different things. They don't directly fit into this as I, as I can see.
Yes and no. Uh, we're gonna focus on the general fund for this year.
Okay.
The library uh, contributions go from the general fund over. EMS is a separate line item, tax collects, collected for that service. We're gonna leave that alone for this year.
Okay, so we're just doing this for the general?
Yeah, but but you can take like a uh, a cost. Now, it's gonna, we're not gonna have any, we're not gonna owe the labor or anything, but it's an allocation to the library, for example. And we're gonna go down through these questions and we're gonna try to rank that as best we can with the information we have. You know, might rank in the middle, low, high, we don't know, but. You know, might rank in the middle, low, high, we don't know, but, you know, we, we'd like to try to get you to, to do that with whatever's in the general fund. This time around. So, you know, re- baggage collection is a separate fund. We're not going to do anything with that this year. Water, sewer, not going to do anything other than maybe try to tell them we're switching over. But just with the, the staff resources that we have, this is, this is more than, I mean, that's all we can do to get this going this time. But maybe by next year, we can do the other funds. But your questions are our questions. We're, we're trying to find other, uh, municipalities that went through this. Like how do you do, what do you do with support services, like payroll, accounting, you know, they, they fit in somehow too.
And they have to be done.
They have to be done, but, you know, you sort of go through the questions and rankings the same. But, uh, it'll, it'll be a learning experience, but I think it'll be valuable as we go through it. We're, we're going to do this a couple repetition times, or a couple times for repetition. And what we're going to do is Lori's away, she'll be back, I believe, for the next meeting. Our goal is to start at, doing some of the easier, uh, more straightforward funds. You know, there's, there's fire protection, fire equipment, there's a street lighting fund. Those are all separate funds. Community development block grant funding, which I don't even know if, we may not do too much of that anymore, because the county does it for us. But we have that fund, uh, so we'll, we'll start to work on those. And then have some time to, to go back over this and maybe start getting some small pieces of the general fund. Go through this process. You know, we'd have Gina come in and walk down through the planning, harm, zone, zoning and all of that. And, and try that section. Eventually we get to streets. So we have Julie and Matt as supervisors. We have them come in and we walk down through.
Is the streets a different budget?
What?
Aren't streets a different budget?
Well, it's under the general fund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, planning, zoning, harm, streets, fleece, general governments, all under the general fund.
Even if we're doing that, can't we, you know, if we understand the process, the procedure that we're going to use to determine what's important and what's not important, is basically what we're doing.
Yes.
So if, if we're able to do that, we could do that with anything, we could do that with the fire department, we could do that with the EMS.
Yes, yes.
And that way we're still u- using it, but we're not, we're not, might not have all the guidance we have for it, but.
Yeah, we, we don't have the forms set up.
Right, that's okay, but I understand we're just doing general fund this time.
Yes.
But we can still utilize that thought process.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I think it would help us all better to do it that way.
Yes, I, I agree. Uh, we just, you know, we're, we're trying to, we, we have to have something that's presentable and understandable and usable. So, uh, this is where we're at with, uh, that adaptation, you know, the process. There, there is a program you can buy. Of course, that's what they, the people that put this budgeting system together have a program of, you know, Excel spreadsheets with all this stuff in it. Uh, we're going to lease that through a webinar, but, but we're not, we're not there yet. So this year, probably for s- for sure, we're just using what Julie has come up with.
And if we do go, the other thing to using these Excel sheets and everything is if we do go to something like that, we already have this information. That's easily transferable, so we don't have to do it again, just be able to move it easily.
So timing wise, what are our duties?
Well, we're going to, we're going to try to, we're, we're going to sit down with Lori, who's again away, and work out a, a calendar or schedule of events. You know, when we're getting, when, when we would do, just like we've done in previous years with the finance committee. Kind of lay out when, uh, different funds would be being reviewed by council. Uh, we're going to try and do everything in work sessions, Randy mentioned in his note over the weekend, that we're going to start, maybe start at six o'clock. And start going through the sessions. Now, we'll be, I, I think we picked up a couple of good ideas, like kind of some kind of, like, communication notes where supervisors can answer in between the meetings and then come in here and kind of review things. So we can try to get that going.
Like a, like a chat box.
Chat box, that's a good one. But, uh, be assured, we're, we're learning as much as you are, but we're here to help you as much as we can. You know, sit down with you, go through this, help, help you with, just like we did with Randy's example, you know, go through that until you're comfortable and you're ready to take it, uh, take it on your own, or you want to come back a week later and check in. We're, we're willing to do whatever it takes.
So, yeah, so right before a session, we would have everything ready, already ranked by the su- by supervisors. And you can just go through before and do your own ranking, or decide what questions you might have in order to do the ranking before the meetings.
And relate to what Rita said earlier about the security issues. Uh, when we're talking about, I cannot, I can easily see how you can say, Joanne can only do this, this subset of columns. How are we going to be asking the questions so, so we can get it back to the thing? We need to make sure that that, that back and forth is open to everybody somewhere.
Well, that's, that's what I was saying about a listserv, you could, everybody could see what the question's being asked in one location.
Yeah, and it might be just another, uh, second versus details of program or service, these are questions to be answered. And then you just, and all of us could plug in questions and responses for something like that. And that, that would be open to everybody, both the managers and the council members.
We'll, uh, work on that, brainstorm on that, come up with something.
Can you protect the line items? Can you put like a protection on them that, once, once they're done, once everybody's done with their columns, the managers?
Yes, we could, yeah, and we could fill out the sheet too.
You couldn't, you couldn't get into it or anything?
Yeah, we could do that, if we.
But you can still see the details, you just can't change anything.
I might be a little bit, I think I might go through and say, I'm going to, excuse myself, I would go through and I'd put all the rankings. Then we get into a work session and we ask the questions and you realize that there's a, you, well, based on that new information, you want to change some of your rankings. I think if you encrypted such a matter that it's protected and you can't do it once you enter, I think we may have a problem.
Only in, only in the red that we're not looking at.
Yeah, oh, okay, own parts of it. We could, or we could just let, let the document open until after everyone's done their rankings and have, and met and been able to put. I think it would be good, even if you had questions that needed to be answered, for those to be in the detail section for the future would be a good thing too.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we're trying to keep it open so that everybody has, has as much opportunity as needed.
When I do things, it's like, i- it's an iterative process. And I think it's true for most people, yes. Here, I hear more information, I'll need to go back and make some tweaks.
All right, so that's our overview.
All right. Any other questions? Ken? Okay, he said. All right, this time then we'll adjourn till seven thirty. Be back for the business meeting.
Orleans, anybody here?
Okay, it's, we're calling the meeting to order. Council chambers is open to the public with normal or standard occupancy levels, face covering mask are optional, and masks are available in the sign and desk. Uh, you can view a live feed or recording of work sessions and borough council meetings. Uh, council work sessions and council business meetings can be viewed live on YouTube, and also recordings can be viewed on CNET, Comcast Government Education Channel Seven. Uh, you can also attend virtually if you contact the borough by four P M. on the evening of the meeting, and, uh, that can be sent to you over email. With that, we'll welcome everyone to the Bonbon Borough Council Meeting. We'll do our best to start the meetings on time and end on time. Due to the room acoustics, please speak up when, uh, talking so people can hear what you're saying. All comments or reports should be kept to three minutes maximum, and thank you to follow that. This time then we'll stand for pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There'll be roll call. Mr. Banier.
I'm here.
Mr. Bradbill.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tostievacy.
I'm here.
Mayor Johnson is excused.
Okay, moving on to additions to council meeting agenda. In accordance with Act sixty-five of twenty twenty-one, if a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action, uh, without some exceptions. The council can act on matters related to potential real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through majority vote. Council should state the reason why the action item is being added to the agenda. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to public comments. Again, uh, we've changed our public comment area, um, to include all comments. So the public comment period is, is for oral comment, comments regarding any action items listed on this meeting agenda or comments in general. No deliberations will be entered into by council at this time. Please sign in, which we've already done, but when you come to the podium, please give us your name and address, and which item you're going to speak about. And please limit your comments to three minutes max. Are there any public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Chris Morally, and I live at one sixty-two East Curtain Street. Can I comment on the, the report section, item number two, zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, um, I was at the meeting where a landlord from State College was requiring some relief, um, in zoning for, uh, this property to go from single-family residence to duplex. Um, it used to be a duplex back in the day. My problem was the, the relief sought had nothing to do with her being able to do what she wants with the property. With the exception of being able to have two rental contracts versus one. In my opinion, probably making more money. That's not what she sought relief for. She sought it for, and I'm, I'm only paraphrasing, um, Mr. Johnson was at the meeting, Doug Johnson was at the meeting, as well as Gina, I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't know your last name. Uh, and, and she was there, obviously, so they could probably clarify some of the things. But the, the relief sought was, um, for, again, I'm paraphrasing, quote unquote, not even quotes, but historical preservation. Uh, because it used to be a duplex and now it's a single family. But this is private property, and I'm only aware of laws and rules governing private property in historical areas um, that affect the outside of the property and not the inside. Most folks inside the historical section of town can do what they want inside their house, or most, to the, to most extent. And the only times some of the issues come up with historical aspects of their property is when it deals with the outside. Because that's the only piece the public can see and benefit from, and I get that. Um, but this, this was only for the inside. Whether you have a duplex there or a single-family residence, you can't tell by standing on the sidewalk. Public can't go in there and check out the place and make sure it looks like it did back in the day, because it's private property. So I don't think they met the requirements for relief. So I don't think they met the requirements for relief. Zoning board voted for it. So I think this board should at the very least recommend it be appealed, just so another group of folks can take maybe a common sense approach at this process and, and check it out again. Thank you so much, Mr. President, for allowing my comments.
Any other public comments this evening? Joanne?
Okay. I sent emails to you, Don, and Ralph about this. Dave Kurtz came by my house last week and asked if I would look at a stormwater issue next to Spring Creek. We actually went out yesterday in the rain and walked along the pathway between Tussie Mountain Outfitters and the sewage treatment plant that is used by hikers and dog walkers. Stormwater is running off of Beaver Street, across Water Street, and down the hill into Springs Street. Because of the stronger storms, a gully has now been created cutting the walkway across the stream in half. It's gone to the point that Tussie Mountain Outfitters is no longer cutting the grass beyond that point, and people who have shorter walking strides, like myself, are beginning to have problems crossing this path. He did make some possible suggestions, including spreading out the stormwater runoff in some way so that no longer shoots down the hill, adding some more stormwater drains on Beaver Street, and possibly adding piping to the walkway area to create sort of like a bridge over the widening gully. I did take pictures of the problem. I sent them to Ralph, Don, and Randy, and Ralph responded back that they're going to look into the issue.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications.
First one is Bellefonte's.
Let me stop you right there. Before we go into that.
All right, sir.
We had two, two applications for the same day, back-to-back. Basically, it's the Bellefonte Sunrise Rotary Club and the YMCA, and they should be in your packet. There's issues with these because there's a lot of unknowns with what they want to do. It almost looks like they're together, but they're not. The Bellefonte Sunrise Rotary is working with Historic Bellefonte, Inc. They are in, they are in Tallyrand Park on Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And they're also starting one hour earlier than they did previous years. So the vendor would be setting up at 8:00 AM, and then they anticipate the Fall Fest to be a major community event with activities. Along with that, they will be requesting boroughs permission to hold a wine tasting event as part of the Fall Fest that will be organized with the procedures approved by the Bellefonte Borough Council in previous years. That section really isn't telling us what are those procedures. I don't remember what they were without going back, but I think it's to the requister that they still add that information in. They also, Rotary Club also asked boroughs permission to hang two promotional banners on High Street Bridge for about two weeks before the event. And, let's see, they would be there from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM Saturday, the 20th. Well, actually, they're looking for a street closure of Potter Street to throw traffic from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, the 29th. And then you get into the YMCA, they, again, their date is 10/29/22, 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM. So that's where the, there's an overlap between the 10:00 AM and the 11:00 AM. They set up, their setup hours are 7:30 and the breakdown hours are 11:00. So there's no time for anybody to clean up from one group to the next. And I'm not sure how the borough handles that when you have them back-to-back like that, if there's a lot of trash accumulated, and then the next group comes in and they have nowhere to put any kind of trash. So that needs to be dealt with. But basically, what I'm asking council to do is make a motion to table these items so the staff can go back and connect with these folks and see if we can't get this straightened out either. Maybe the sunrise goes back to their 11 o'clock original starting time that they used in the years past. Because I just, I just think that, you know, they're having, the YMCA is having bike races and foot races, and everything's ending in the park.
And with their, as well.
Yeah, they're also asked for alcohol. I'm not quite sure how they did that with Big Springs, because Big Springs is doing both. And maybe that's how they got them.
At last year's Fall Festival, the wine tasting was under the pergola on the gazebo side of the park. Their Fall Festival was pretty much on the gazebo side of the park, and the wine tasting was held there. According to the, the other application, their event ends over at the distillery. And what I'm reading here is that their event would take place on that side of the park, whatever their alcohol.
I'll send her and try to figure it out. That's why we want staff to go back and just table. We've got time. They can get back and relook at it with the folks.
I'll make that motion to table for both of those items.
Yeah, I'm including them as one item. So I have a motion to table the Bellefonte Sunrise Rotary Club and YMCA request for use of Governor's Park.
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second it. Dan?
Specifically, I'm asking to table until these organizations can coordinate their events and bring back a joint plan for today.
If, if they are indeed.
They're not joint, these are separate.
Or some kind of thing to get rid of this problem.
I wouldn't throw too much into it. Let staff do their work with them, and I think they'll pick them up. So we have a motion by Joanne and a second by Park Dan to table this. There's no discussion.
There's, there's no discussion.
All those in favor of tabling, so you can talk by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Doug? Dan?
I'm in favor of table.
Aye. Motion passes? So they go.
All right, yes. No. Okay, thank you.
Skip three and eight.
No problem. Bellefonte Soccer Association requests use Governor's Park soccer field. Their fall season for coming up here starts August 29th. They're already started through November 5th, Monday through Thursday evenings, and then Saturday, 10:00 AM to 1:00.
So I'll call for a motion and a second to approve the Bellefonte Soccer Association's request to use Governor's Park soccer fields, August 29th, November 5th, Monday.
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM, and Saturday's 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
I'll make that motion. Purnell?
I'll second it. Clayton?
Question by Purnell, second by Clayton. Discussion?
Are there any conflicting groups that have already been approved that decided this time?
Not that I'm aware of, but if you want to make that a condition.
Yeah, I'd like to make that a condition. And the second question, is there any cost for running the soccer fields?
I don't think we've established that application.
It's something we can consider with the budget. Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to allow Bellefonte Soccer Association's request to use Governor's Park soccer fields on August 29th through November 5th, Monday through Thursday, 5:30 to 8:30 PM, and Saturday's 10:00 to 1:00 PM, signify by saying aye.
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 Those same sign. Motion carries.
Next item is downtown Bellefonte Incorporated. They have their Friday in the font, special events on September 30th and October 28th from 4:00 PM to 9:00. It appears to be mostly on the courthouse property and some private property. How they also list the, yeah, September 30th and October 28th, yes, got that. But I'm not sure exactly what we're approving since it's on the courthouse property and on private property.
So we don't need to approve the alcohol on the private property?
No, private property, we don't have control over.
But we do expect the police to, if somebody comes out of that and.
Yeah, they do their regular.
Do your thing.
They, they did ask for some parking, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that something that we?
We would.
They come back.
Yeah, there was a note in there in the letter about parking for drop-off or pickup or something, or setup. So we, I guess that's going to follow it some.
So I'm not sure what kind of motion we need to make.
That's what I, I wasn't sure at this point.
Yeah, I have several questions that may, if I could ask them, then maybe someone can figure out what kind of motion we need.
What I think I would do, if they want to approve Friday in the font for September, then just approve the dates. That would be enough, I think, to get that through. Everything else is in the letter. So we'll make a motion, I'll call for a motion to approve Friday in the font for September 30th and October 28th.
I'll make that motion.
Second, McKean.
Okay, McKean, any other discussion?
So I think going back to what Ralph was saying, I'm assuming when they say private property, they mean the courthouse lawn as private property.
I don't think so. I don't think the county would leave them use that for alcohol. They're going to set up, I believe, the bands and things there.
Okay.
But I think, you know, here a few years ago, they used a property nearby. I'm assuming that's the property they're using, but it's not borough or county property, to my knowledge.
Okay.
We could ask that question.
I think this should be sort of a conditional approval in that case. And the conditions would, that I see, so I'd like to amend it, is that, that they provide us with details on the alcohol use, where, when, and how they're going to do it, that the approvals that we would be giving them are for fire police, for traffic, and pedestrian control.
I didn't see that.
They're not doing anything.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
But if, well, my concern is that this is the area we've had the, the traffic issues. And if they're going to have a lot of people crossing a street somewhere, and we don't know which street it is.
They're, they're not supposed to. They're, first of all, is that the courthouse? They said everybody stays within the private property boundary. I mean, that's what they're saying.
They have to cross the street somehow in order to get off of the courthouse lawn to a private property.
Yeah, they use the sidewalks and the crosswalks.
That's what I'm saying, is that we probably need to have fire police for that, that kind of control.
To them, to ask for that, it's not a question to demand on them.
Okay.
So it wasn't requested.
And I'd also like to know which streets they want it to cross.
I don't think they asked about those streets.
If they're crossing, okay. Those are the kind of questions I have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious going on what the letter says.
Yeah.
So the only thing conditional on this would be.
The end of the month, Friday, the, what is it, the 29th?
The 30th and 28th.
Thank you.
October 28th and September 30th. So the only condition on this would be the location of.
The private.
Yeah.
Private property or the alcohol location. Is there a second to that?
Second to that, Sedgwick.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. And now back to the main motion. We call, we approve the Friday in the font for September 30th and October 28th on condition of providing location for the alcohol setup. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those again, same sign. That motion carries.
Next item, the Faith Center wants to do a 5K run on October 15th. I think a map was included, and it says no road closures involved.
We have a letter here, and a map is attached to it. So I'll call for a motion and second to approve the, actually, this is, this is in addition to, I think this was an earlier request that they had. So now they're just trying to get the map.
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
So, call for a motion and second to approve the, to approve the provided route for the Faith Center 5K on October 15th, 2022, with no road closures.
Some of.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Second. Clayton, all okay. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the provided route for the Faith Center 5K run on October 15th, 2022, with no road closures, signify by saying aye.
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 Those again, the same sign, the motion carries.
Next item is the Trinity United Methodist Church requesting a rescheduling of their fundraiser run Governor's Park to April 7th and 8th, 2023.
This was another one that was requested a while back. So, I'll call for a motion and second to approve Trinity United Methodist Church fundraiser run to be rescheduled from April, for April 7th and 8th, 2023, in Governor's Park. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion. McKean?
McKean?
I'll second, Purnell.
Second by Purnell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the United Methodist Church fundraising run to be scheduled for April 7th and 8th, 2023, in Governor's Park, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
The Centaur County Library and Historic Museum, and Deb Clayton's our representative, provide an update and then offer to meet with council at some point to discuss or share their priorities for 2023.
So I think what we can do here, we don't need to really make a motion on this, but we can invite them either to a council meeting or a work session, whichever we can fit in. Maybe, might be better for maybe one of the first council meetings of the month.
Okay.
So I, I was thinking with this priority budgets, this is part of the general budget. If you can figure out what the schedule is going to be, it's trying to put them in at that meeting.
Oh, try.
That way, we're, we're not coming back and forth.
Okay. Next item, Watermark Church requesting hanging banner on the Veterans Bridge from September 11th through the 18th prior to their event. That was already approved.
Yeah, this is a kind of a last-minute type thing. I don't know about the dates. We don't know yet. We'd have to check on that.
Oh, it's definitely September 18th, but it's.
We don't have any numbers up there now.
I don't think so.
We can do a conditional approval.
Yeah, we can do that.
So call for a conditional motion and second to approve the Watermark Church banner to be hung on Veterans Bridge, September 11th to the 18th, with removal concluding the outreach event on September 18th, and the condition is that the bridge is available.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
Dan, second?
Second, Sedgwick.
Sedgwick. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve, to approve the conditional motion for Watermark Church banner to be hung on Veterans Bridge on September 11th to the 18th, with removal concluding the outreach event on September 18th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion carries.
Next item, Lions Club requesting to hold their annual rib sale dinner fundraiser by the Brownstone at the intersection of High and Allegheny, October 15th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Windows, traditional parking space area.
Yep, so we'll call for a motion and second to approve the Lions Club use of the parking spaces by the Brownstone Building at the Diamond for their annual rib sale on October 15th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion, Sedgwick.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Okay, a motion by Sedgwick, second by Clayton. Any discussion?
Yeah. The letter says that they'd like this area blocked off from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Your motion only says 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Do we need to amend it to count, count for those time periods?
Sure, if that's what the letter says.
I think where the confusion is, that the meals will be served between 11:00 and so.
So I think it's the, it should be amended. So I think it's the men, it should be amended to say from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also, um...
Wait a minute, are you amending that more or...
Yeah, that's why I'm only mentioning this other part, uh, just so that it was known whether the whole amendment can be done at once. The other is that they're sa- say they're serving from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. And the question I had is there gonna be tables for people to eat at this time, or is this pickup times only? Okay, so there are no tables?
No tables. The tables I have is, they're using to serve from...
Okay, so, so then that, that would be my, based on that, then that would be my total amendment.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second, McKean.
Okay. Any more discussion on that amendment? All right, so, uh... Call for a vote to amend, uh, to approve the amendment to change the time, the serving time.
Set up.
From 11, yeah, we'll do, to the setup time of 7:00 a.m. and not 11:00 a.m.
I'm going to 3:00 p.m.
And it'll still go to 3:00 p.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, that amendment passed. Now we can do the full motion, uh, which will approve the Belfont Lions Club request to set up the Lions Club tent with on the Diamond to have their annual rib sale, uh, Saturday, October 15th, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those against same sign. Motion carries.
Next item is the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection has declared 36 counties in Pennsylvania as drought watch counties, I guess, and Central County is one of those. They just requested, or it's voluntary, but they requested a, a 5% to 10% cutback in water usages on a daily basis if possible. So it's just a, for your information.
Could we put that information on the website?
Mm-hmm. Next item, the United Way Day of Caring is scheduled for October 6th, 2022. We put the project list in the information sent out to council members. Uh, a lot of Belfont projects, uh, take a look at that list. It's, no actions required on this.
Is this something that we'd like to advertise to the public?
Uh, if anybody wants, I mean, I know they're sending it out too, but, uh, we, we could do it as well or mention it's, you know, October 6th, Day of Caring, looking for volunteers and effort projects.
That would, I think, be nice for the community.
Probably go to the United Way, Central County website for more information.
Thanks.
Sure. Next item, uh, our local Habitat for Humanity is having a home dedication. There's actually three homes involved. That's scheduled for, I think, 3:00 p.m., September 22nd here in Belfont, uh, Fifth Avenue, West Fifth Avenue, with, West Beaver Street, I believe it is, in that area. It's three houses. Uh, the council members are invited, the mayor's invited, some staff as well. No action required.
No action required.
Yeah. Next item, we got a letter from a Governor's Park, related to a Governor's, a family that has reunions at Governor's Park. They're not going to do reunions anymore and they donated their small amount of reunion funds, $123, uh, which is, we definitely want to send them a thank you letter, uh, for doing that. It's very nice of them. So we just want you to be aware of that.
I'd like to thank them and, and ask you, is this going, are these $123 going into the park's budget or...
Yeah, we can put it in the park's fund.
Okay.
Want to make that a motion?
Uh, it's, if you, I didn't know, I mean, we'll just take care of it administratively.
Sure.
A letter, we received a letter from a resident in regard to a vehicle parked for a long period of time on East Lynn Street. We did have Chief Weaver reply, uh, the vehicle is current, has current registration and licensing, uh, is not considered abandoned. Uh, but we want you to see the letter since it was addressed to council. Next item, a letter from a resident, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, resident driver, concerned about drivers speeding on East Howard Street. And that, I think we, uh, may, maybe we gave, I don't know if we gave Sean a copy, but we will if we haven't already.
Do we need to make a motion?
They requested this to be read.
That's, that's typical, I mean, that's a request, it's up to you.
Oh, I can read it if you want. Have, has council read this letter?
I have.
All right.
Do we need to make a motion or have we already sent this?
I think this particular letter, uh, should go to Sean because what's, basically what, I think the best suggestion here is to have more of a police presence at this time of year to get things, and, you know, whether you give a warnings, I mean, it's probably...
I have read that and will be addressed.
Do you have this from there?
Yes.
Thanks. I'd give it to the mayor, but he's not here.
Next item, there's a letter, we received a letter, uh, to Borough Council in regard to water maybe possibly being sold to the new potential warehouse structure that's being talked about in Better Township. That same letter, since it was addressed to council, we gave it to you, and it's also in the authority packet for their meeting tomorrow night. So we have no action at, at this point. Uh, next item, we did receive a complaint letter regarding the parking system, the red spaces, some enforcement issues. Uh, that, that'll also be forwarded to the department personnel and get some feedback on that.
Related to that, uh, on Saturday, while I was out walking, I met a guy who lives on South Allegheny Street. Uh, his name's John Englerk. He said he moved here five years ago and immediately purchased an annual parking ticket for the south parking lot. He's now gotten two tickets while legally parked there and has had to take off work without pay in order to get both tickets expunged. So I think this is another similar thing that we need to address at the same time.
Sorry, been dealt with.
Okay. Been dealt with.
Randy, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I, I had, and I, I guess this is the appropriate time, not the beginning of the meeting, but, uh, two people have come up to me and said, during the afternoons at the CVS parking lot where the kiosk is, uh, enter your license plate number and all that jazz.
Mm-hmm.
The sun is so bright, they cannot read the screen and follow directions on the screen. Yeah, so I'd like our parking staff to take a look at that. If anything, that, we can resolve that. Um, the other thing is, they tried to, after that, that, that attempt, they tried to use the parking meters by Von Fato's with a credit card, and it wouldn't accept the credit card. So I don't know how we check those meters, if it goes by complaints, but they became frustrated and just went to another parking area. Just a couple of comments, thanks.
And, um, on Saturday I heard, or, yeah, Saturday, the CVS parking kiosk there also had moisture in it, so they couldn't see the screen either that evening.
Maybe that's what the issue was.
So I've heard both. There's the sun and moisture, so...
Moisture and moisture. Parking, parking.
We might have to take care of that with this, with our street department and look at it, Rob. We might have to create something to make it, the shade to cover it.
Okay, Nick, if there's nothing else, uh, under communications, we move on to the consent agenda, which is, uh, council meeting minutes, and I know Jan wants to pull this one, so... Basically, it's only item on here, uh... So if you want to go ahead with your change, I, I look, actually, so you know, I looked at it on my phone, it looked like something that was laid over it, so I really couldn't tell what the changes were and what they were.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through them. And I also sent Alyssa. Uh, on page three, under the consent agenda, uh, the first full paragraph, this says motion to approve the consent agenda and that I had requested to remove one item, and then it said, and another member. That other member was Doug Johnson.
What was that on again? Page three?
It's page three, the fourth paragraph from the bottom. It said another member, it should say Doug Johnson. On page four, there's a, several clarification amendments. Uh, under the, uh, Office of Community Affairs, there's several bullets. Uh, the third bullet down, uh, there's an arrow, and I thought to make it clear to put in parentheses CLG, after Certified Local Government, because that abbreviation is used consistently after that. And then I would... There, there was a, it said there is, and it should be changed, the CLGs are part of the Historic Preservation Act that was amended by Congress in 1980. Congress created an intergovernmental historic preservation fund program between the National Park Services, which was there, the State Historic Preservation Office and local governments. That, that needs to be added. And then put a period and then say 10% of the annual funds, uh, must go to local certified CLGs under this act.
Was that, that even presented at the...
Yes, I went back and I listened exactly to the, uh...
So there's a whole, basically a whole paragraph?
Yeah, basically. Um, and then the next bullet down, uh, they, the, it said, a question was raised about putting additional language in the existing ordinance for contracts. It was, my question was for expanding or contracting the historic districts in Belfont.
Gina?
And I said...
I'm trying to look for the minutes on my phone because I'm like, I didn't, I didn't plan to...
And I'm reading this, is a question was raised regarding unlicensed contractors doing work in historic...
That's, there's a bullet point before that. It said a question was raised about putting additional language in the existing ordinance for, it says contracts, and it should say expanding or contracting the historic districts in Belfont.
I remember saying that, yes.
Uh, and then I asked for a model language, so it should say toasty bazy then, instead of the council member. The next bullet down, um, it was the, I wanted to clarify what Grunbine said. And it's the last sentence, it says the permitting and licensing process was discussed, and it just ended there. And what he said was based on our ordinance and then possibly looking at revising sections on what he called mercantile licensing. Whatever that is.
It's like the little store that has these...
Right.
Big shops on it.
Then immediately after that, there was a whole section that was not in the minutes at all. And what I've added was, a question was raised why commercial buildings require a building permit for roofs, but residential buildings don't. Ms. Thompson said that our zoning ordinance and the codes offices do not require building permits for roofs on residential buildings, but the code office does require building permits for roofs on commercial buildings. Mr. Grunbine then said that this could be addressed by updating our zoning ordinance to require building permits for all roofs.
Which you're working on, correct? Are you working on the ordinance or...
On the Harv ordinance, on the Harv ordinance.
This is the zoning ordinance issue.
Right, not gonna, we, we don't want to require permits for roofs.
So, but I'm just repeating what Grunbine said.
For, for the historic district or for all?
He said for all. We make it easier.
I don't, I don't know that he was necessarily saying to do that. I think that he was just...
He said that's a possibility.
Offering to, I can follow up with Frank. I don't know that that would be advisable to require...
Right, okay.
...permits for roofs.
Then, going far, then at the bottom of page four, the last bullet point, uh, it, it says, Mr. Grunbine said that Harv plays a vital function in our community and that every building has a story to tell and a purpose, and that consistency. I think we need to add a clause here because what Doug said was talking about, uh, buildings are built in the 50s, and I think clarified by saying that consistency to the period of time when the building was built is vital to preserve a town's given history. And then at the beginning of pa- page five, uh, they talked about economic hardships. And the, the end of the last sentence is he also mentioned that the ordinance does not have an economic hardship provision and that economic hardship can be an issue. I went back to it, I didn't quite understand what he said, but I think if we quote him, it'll actually be a little more accurate. And what he said is, quote, specifically relates to economic hardship of the property, not the individual, unquote. And I said, and I, and then he said that this can be addressed when revising the Harv ordinance. So that's all the hard stuff. And then the last change is in the new business, well, actually two changes there. Uh, on the last paragraph of new business, the date needs to be changed from July 7th to July 5th. And, uh, then, uh, that the EAB was not, uh, Randy said that the EAB was not discontinued permanently and had, but only temporarily. Uh, and then that the issue regarding, should not come before council, before the plan was fully developed. And he clarified what he meant when he said with the assistance of BHCA, HBI, DBI, and the chamber. After their review with the EAB, this can be brought back to the council work session for review and then a reconsideration of the July 5th vote on the survey. So it just puts exactly what happened, so we know what we need to do going forward. And that's it.
Yeah, yeah, I remember my council one is, uh, we want to go up like 2020, maybe 2019. Uh, you know, we don't try, we try to do the minutes the best we can, and so we kind of maybe sometimes leave things out.
Right, I understand that.
The point across of what the discussion was was found to be enough, uh, to support the minutes.
But if there's not a direction as to what we're doing going forward, I think that needs to be added, which is why I did this. There were other things in there I could have added more than I just said.
What I, what I appreciate is if we're gonna do that, then let's, once we, once we get the packet, if you're interested in looking at the minutes, look at the minutes and then maybe, you know, because I try to do that myself if I'm not sure about something, but, uh... I, I just think there's a lot of changes going on and maybe we need to talk to the people who are going this far.
What I had been done, doing in the past, so that this didn't happen, was that I had requested that the minutes be sent to me before they went out on the agenda, so I could work on making those changes, so that we didn't have to go through this at every council meeting. And I, I'd still be willing to do that.
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of that before council so we could all look at it instead of trying to figure this all out now?
Yeah.
I think that may, make it go a little bit faster.
I think it should go to everybody.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
If you want, if you don't, that's fine, but we can do it one source or type of document, you know, where all the changes are in one document. Put it on OneDrive and that's what we'll look at.
Yeah, perfect, I'm great.
I'm not sure if Alyssa's OneDrive works because I think I have problems getting into her OneDrive. I don't have problems getting into Dawn's or what, but I don't know what, what the problem is, but when I try down on the packet, it just doesn't work. I have to go back and individually pull them off of the website. So maybe there's something that could be fixed that I may make that easy.
I'll get on, I'll get on, she's the one who put that on the line. But anyway, let's try that and see if we can put on OneDrive as soon as, as soon as we get the minutes back, and they usually come back.
A couple days after the meeting, yeah.
It'd be just as easy to do that.
I think it'll make it much easier for us and for the public.
Any other, any other changes to the minutes of August 15th? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's a lot for a short meeting. All right. Remembering the reports, uh, the mayor has left. He had another commitment to go to. Gina?
Just a reminder that the, the HARB packet, if I would send that all to you, it would be like thirty pages. So, I don't send that all to you, but if you ever want it, just email me and I'm, I'll be happy to send it to you, but it would just be so cumbersome. I think I did that once, and I ended up making the council packet like an absurd amount of pages, so...
Save the papers.
Yeah. Right, so, the first thing is, just the projects that are here to have a motion for approval. 109 North Thomas Street had three separate motions. They're all for approvals. There's more detail in the packet that you got in the minutes. Each of those motions are specifically outlined there. 105 South Allegheny Street, which is the Brockerhoff House, also has a motion to approve a gate enhancement to cover the, the waste bins of State Burger, and so we'll be working with them on that. 224 High Street, which is the Bush Arcade, has a roof replacement. You've probably seen the blue tarp over top of that, so they're waiting to get going there. And then, 251 North Allegheny Street, there's a stone wall that is being built. So those are all projects for approval.
Okay, so we can do this in one motion?
Yeah, I think so.
So I'll call for a motion to approve exterior repair of the roof replacement, statut payment, and special siding, 109 North Thomas Street. This includes three separate motions to approve some 105 South Allegheny Street, Brockerhoff House, enhancement of the waste, of the waste area by State Burger. 224 High Street, Bush Arcade, roof replacement with matching singles. And 251 North Allegheny Street, a stone wall, and that's a motion.
I'll make that motion, Cletton.
And Cletton, a motion, and a second.
I'll start the news, Dan.
And discussion?
I think this enhancement for the waste bins is an excellent, wonderful idea. The pictures and what they're planning on doing, I think will mitigate all the problems we've been complaining about and having had complaints about for two or three years.
Yeah. I'm excited about it myself, so don't want to see the ugly oil container things.
And the other discussions of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve 109 North Thomas Street, 105 South Allegheny Street, 224 High Street, and 251 North Allegheny Street, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those same side, or motion carried?
Okay, and then, for zoning, as I had previously mentioned in upcoming, we did have a zoning hearing board meeting on, I believe it was August 16th, for a dimensional variance for 121 East Curtain Street. And this was to change from the single-family residence to duplex. And the variance was granted by the zoning hearing board. I included in my packet the facts and findings that are written up by the zoning hearing board solicitor, so those are in your packet for you to review. This was my first zoning hearing board, so, meeting, so it was a great experience. The way that this works procedurally is that council does have an opportunity to appeal the decision if they want to. They go, the, the appeals to the zoning hearing board decision are made to the county court of common pleas, so... Are there any questions?
What's the actual date of the decision? That this is in writing or signed?
Oh, this, the, the... I'm not sure.
The only reason I ask is that starts a thirty day clock for the appeal. You only have a thirty day window to appeal.
Would the decision be the night that they made it, or the night that this was?
Usually, usually the night that this is, or this is dated from the solicitor.
Okay, I believe this was sent to me last Friday, but I can get a specific date.
I guess what I'm getting, do we have one, do we need to do something tonight, or do we have the next council meeting?
You would have till the next council meeting, if you want to do. This was, I'll just, it was sent on Wednesday, August 31st, I believe.
The meeting was the 16th.
Right.
And then you're good.
But then, so this was sent, this was finalized on August 31st, so I'll make a note of that.
Soon as we have, I guess, September 29th.
Yeah, I mean, you only meet twice a month, so...
So do we need to relook at the information that you have in the packet to make, make our decisions, or what do we, does this go to court?
No, you, you have to file, you have to talk to your borough solicitor. The zoning hearing board uses a different, their own solicitor. I'm just saying, had the party that applied lost, they'd have the same thirty day window to appeal. You can appeal if you don't like the decision of the zoning hearing board. You're not mandated to do anything, but if you didn't like their decision, you could appeal. That appeal goes to center county court. And, you know, you'd have to talk to the borough solicitor, explain that you're not happy, maybe you think the zoning hearing board didn't follow the five criteria for granting variances or what have you. Whatever the case may be, you find that, you think that the zoning hearing board didn't make a good decision. If that's a majority of council, then you can appeal it to center county court and have them look at it.
I think it would be us to wait two weeks and have Gina send out to council what the five criteria are, so that they know what, they can look at that route, and then, then we can discuss it.
We probably could have a couple minute discussion on the five criteria and that kind of thing, in, in the work session, and then you can decide.
I can do that.
Okay. That'll be at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
So do we need a motion to table?
Well, no, because there's no, there's no motion right now. This is just factual information, reporting on the outcome of the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
Just letting you guys know that you do have an opportunity to appeal.
So our next meeting is the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay. So we get that process. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Randy, I have a question for Gina.
Yep.
Real quick.
Hi, Doug.
Go ahead.
Hi Gina. On page two of the notes you sent us?
Yes.
There was, there was a Snyder motion to approve the painting of the asbestos siding replacement, blah, blah, blah. Okay? The motion carried in a three in favor and two negative. As we do in council, would you please list the yes votes and the negative votes in the future?
Sure, sure.
Most of the other ones were, were carried unanimously.
Right.
So I'd like to know who voted for and against those ones that seem to be some, a little bit controversial. Thanks.
Yep, do you want me, do you just, do you want that information right now, or do you just want me to include that in the future?
Well, no, if we could just include it in the future.
Okay.
When, when there's not a unanimous vote.
Sure.
As we do on council, we often list who was yes or no when it's not unanimous approval. Thanks.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, so we'll move on then to current old business. So, uh, Lake Women Voters Banner Resolution Number 0906-2022-01. I'll call for a motion and second to approve the resolution of that number, 0906-2022-01.
So I'll...
I'll second it, Cletton.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution for the banner for Lake Women Voters, number 0906-2022-01, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same side? Motion carries?
Next one's a, an action item for establishing or considering the establishment of a delegate for the municipal league summit. And I believe, like, from what I understand, Ms. Tosti Vasey is registered to go and is interested in being considered for being a delegate.
Okay, so, call for a motion and second to appoint a delegate to the municipal leadership summit?
I'll make the motion. Sedwick.
For Joanne?
For Joanne.
I'll second McKean.
Discussion?
I have a question. This was brought up before about belonging to this group and also PSAB.
Yes.
Do we still, maybe belongs not the right term, but are we still active in both those organizations?
We belong to both those organizations. That, you know, again, with the work we've done with the Delta Group in getting rid of duplications, this is one of the duplications that we talked about earlier. Now, we put it off until the budget time, but where we're heading right now. And at this point, I'm, I'm still under the same mindset that we would not belong to the municipal leadership, some leadership anymore after this year. But that's, that's my personal look at this. And, you know, with that, then I'm wondering why we need to send, you know, why we need a delegate, because if we do remove ourselves, then what's the point of us making law for or supporting something for them? That's this one kind of thing.
I agree with that. I did look up a little bit online with both organizations, and the PSAB is dedicated to the boroughs, townships, and I think they're just a much better fit for us.
And I disagree, but this, that's what the council's all about.
Yes, it is.
The, we are active in PML. I serve as their vice chair for the, this region. Dawn and I have been doing a lot of work with them, particularly with the sustainability programs. And I think this is, it's a, in my, my opinion, I think it's a good fit, and, and I specifically did not sign up for PSAB so that I could use the funds available to go to PML.
Any other discussion?
When does our membership with PML run out?
It's a yearly basis.
It's a, the calendar year?
Yeah. Yeah, we tried to find that out, and I think...
Yeah, it came back, and Lori had already paid, but it's for the year.
So we're still members through the end of 2022.
Right. Cat, Doug, anything? Comments? No? Okay.
Go ahead, Kate.
Only that I thought we'd already covered this, but I, I guess I don't remember exactly the decision to, to not be part of one of these or not be part of both of them.
Yeah, but let me clarify, what I, what I, what I'm saying is, all we're doing is voting to provide a delegate to that meeting. We're not voting on what we're doing at, with that program itself. Okay, so just keep, that's where we're at with this, so that would be the vote.
So in voting for it, we're funding that trip, or participation in that meeting?
Sorry, the...
It's already been approved.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any, any else?
What's, what's been approved? The, the financing of it? Is that what you're saying?
I, I agreed to pay for the transportation there and take, figure out how to take care of half the room, so I'm reducing the cost for the borough.
Okay.
And, you know, whether, whether she goes to it or not is, is up to her, whether she's a delegate or not is up to us. That's what we're deciding. We're not deciding if she goes or doesn't go. It's just, is she gonna be a delegate or not? That's the question being asked, right?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve, or we have the motion to approve Joanne as, as the delegate? With that, we'll move on to approval? Or do a roll call vote?
Okay, if you want to. Mr. Benear?
No.
Mr. Blackbill?
No.
Ms. Cletton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
I have to vote yes. This is probably the last participation, as, I, I vote yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Brunell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vasey?
Yes.
Six yeses, three noes.
Okay, you're a delegate. Good luck.
Okay, so the paperwork needs to be in before Friday, and Randy, you need to sign it.
Do I have any sense of what?
We can take care of it later.
Good. All right. Okay. So then, the next item is the Union Cemetery Work Day for follow-up? There's no council action?
No, I just, you know, it was very successful with a picture, I don't know if you noticed in the materials, was of Randy beside or near one of the tombstones, they were cleaning and working resettings.
Taking them out.
It looked like you were working.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, it was a learning experience. Some of those stones, like that one that's laying there in front of me was probably a thousand pound to move around. I thought we had a lift.
Yeah.
But it worked, it was good.
Well, thank you, Randy. I do have one question though about this. They were discussing about adding donated benches, benches throughout the Union Cemetery? I assume we don't have to have, do anything with that, just totally goes to the Union Cemetery Board, correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
That was something that Kerry Banninghoff suggested, yeah. We have it over there.
New business?
Yep.
Okay, next new, new business item, draft update of the school resource officer agreement. This is where we combined our couple of VAR agreements. It's a draft. Once, once we're okay with the language and all that, we would have, have the school district look at it as well and explain that we just wanted to update the agreement. So, looking for feedback on that.
So as far as costs, I don't, I'm saying where they're obligated, or, you know, each side's obligated to pay for this or that, but I'm not saying any numbers, so is that normal?
It's basically seventy-five percent, or should be in there, seventy-five percent. I missed it, too.
I missed it, too.
I don't, I haven't ever seen anything.
There is the initial payment of sixty thousand dollars, as of the date of the agreement.
That, that was a relation to a grant.
Right.
We'll have to maybe do some looking at to see how the two are combined.
First of all, at point of order, I think we need a motion first, and then we can have this discussion.
So let's have a motion to approve the draft agreement with the Gulf County School District for the SROs.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Mark Dan? Discussion?
I think our due solicitor needs to review this.
Well, the solicitor wrote it.
Oh, okay.
The solicitor may not have been able, you know, to, to know that some of the facts have changed, like that was a grant, about the sixty thousand dollars. So, how about maybe Dawn or I, or both of us review it and bring it back?
So can we have a, so I'll make a motion to table until it's been reviewed. And I think maybe having anyone who has questions, send them to Ralph and Dawn, so that...
We have a second? We have a second to the motion to table?
I'll second it.
And we have a table, uh, all the, we're voting, I'm just supposed to vote on it. All those in favor of the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries, so it's table until the next meeting. Be the nineteenth.
Next item is AT&amp;T Tower Agreement. We received a draft amendment or really new agreement for the, this tower that's on the water tank up by Corning.
It's essentially an extension, five years to the agreement.
Oh, no, it's a twenty-five year extension.
Five.
I think it's a fourth amendment.
Regardless, we call for a motion and second to approve the agreement amended for, uh, two fifty-four Transfer Road Cell Tower with AT&amp;T. Another motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mark Dan?
I'll second it, Clayton. Second, Deb Clayton.
I took a look at the agreement real quick. My, my concern is the water tank has these towers on top of them, and, you know, the water authority, it's, it's, it's an unusual situation, uh, that the water tanks are owned by the authority. The tower and the revenue was approved by Borough Council years ago, and the, the revenue goes into the general fund. But nevertheless, the tanks, that tank needs rehabilitated, and we've been looking at trying to find grants and all that, so it hasn't been done. But I would like to review this agreement to make sure, this amendment, make sure we have the ability to go in and rehab the tank without undo or without us having to pay the cell tower company a lot of money, or basically agree that they're going to assist with us in that process. Uh, because I, I know when we had one consultant looking at this, uh, they looked at the agreements to see what kind of restrictions or what kind of obstacles were there. So I would like to review the amendment with, you know, that, in that regard, to see if there's any obstructions for doing the rehabilitation of the tank.
And I would oppose this, because if you go down to the term of the agreement, it says for five additional, automatic, five additional sixty month terms, which is twenty-five years, which is where I came up with the twenty-five years.
Yeah, no, we'd have to make, see if there's a, a notice requirement. Usually if, if we, nobody gives notice, you automatically renew, but that should be looked at.
And, and, um, and my concern is that we had a fifty-year agreement with Coca-Cola or the prior one.
Yes.
Uh, that we weren't happy about because of the low reimbursement rates we received, that we were locked into. And I don't want to see something similar happen with the cell phone tower renewals. Uh, so the first one was a four year that ended in two, was from two thousand two to two thousand six. The second renewal was for two years till two thousand and eight. The current one is a twenty-year agreement through twenty twenty-eight. Even, I think even a twenty-year lease is too long. Uh, and with a one, and, and if you go further down in the contract, it says there's a one-time ten percent rental increase at the beginning of the new lease. And I don't think, considering inflation and all that, that that's something we want to lock ourselves into. So in my opinion, this is a no-go from the start.
Yeah, so if, if we don't do anything with this, the agreement carries.
Yeah, till twenty twenty-eight.
But I'm just saying, if you, you said that if we don't do anything, it, the agreement continues?
No, no.
No.
As a proposed agreement, has a five-year, uh, automatic renewal kind of cycle. But sometimes we'll have a clause where if somebody gives notice.
Right now, we're in the twenty-year lease that ends.
I'd like Mr. Stewart to go and take a look at this and read through it, and, you know, I'm going to do it fast.
Yeah.
I agree with the, the tank is, at this point, is.
Needs rehab, yeah.
So do we need a motion to table, since we had a motion to approve?
Yeah, we can do that.
Motion to table.
I'll second it.
We're good at this since evening, Barbara.
Yes, we are.
Okay, we have a table, all those in favor of tabling the, uh, fourth amendment to lease agreement for AT&amp;T, signify by saying aye.
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 Both same side?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I guess whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
Let's move it back on the agenda.
Sounds good. Last item is a copy of the press release we sent out regarding the original armory building here at three oh one North Spring Street. I think everybody's aware of what happened, so we're, we're set to close at the end of September. So Fri- Friday's the last day of the month. I think it is the twenty-ninth or thirtieth. We're going to try to get in touch with the maintenance staff and have our people walk through and learn what all needs to be done with the building, access to the building for the, the two tenants that are there. Just the operational side of the building needs to be, uh, we need to try to make a smooth transition, so that's what we'll be working on for the time being.
Any questions, Mr. Stewart, for that? Uh, seeing none, I will, uh, let the public know that we are going to end this meeting and move to an executive session, uh, prior, right after adjournment. So at this time, it's eight forty-two, and make a motion to adjourn.
Make that.
Motion, Rita, second.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight forty-three.